We'll go ahead and call our meeting order, the workshop for May the 27th. If it would, all rise, I pledge allegiance and dedication.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, ruled in the judicial justice of all.
Just bear head to moment of silence, please. Amen?
Amen.
He'd get a motion approval for the agenda.
So move.
Got a motion on second.
Second.
All in favor, raise your hand. Uh, move. First off, we'll get into the Chamber of Commerce. We need some direction for those folks and give them direction and get some direction here. Mr. Ricky Brown.
Thank you all. Good afternoon. Thanks for this opportunity to exchange ideas. Before we get into that, first just like kind of reiterate what we talked about last time, which is that we need your funding. We need your support in order to make this thing work. And want to review again kind of how we see this working. One, the team approach. This is not the Allegheny Chamber for Economic Development, independent of anything else. It is a team of the county, the town, and the chamber, all working together. The goal is for an effective and efficient marketing and economic development program for Allegheny County, in which we're all in it, all committed, all looking for the betterment of our county. And then thirdly, a level of accountability that will allow us to measure our progress and success over the long term. We've said this many times. This is not something that we're going to see dramatic change in our county in a year. It's going to take long-term effort, year after year, and it will go on and on, probably further than our collective opportunity to support, because it's a long-term game to build our county. We also are looking, have this effective program that will require this commitment and expression of teamwork. All of us at the county and the town, the chamber, again, working together. What we know about the town is we're in their budget. We know that they're supportive, and they're going to work with us hand in glove, and we look for that kind of commitment from you all. So what we need is a resolution. We've had that before, as we mentioned the last time we were together, but this is a reinforcement of that commitment that says this is the best way to go forward, which is combining the monies of many to get a budget that's effective enough to have the staff, to have the support, to have the marketing, to have the advertising, to support our county's ongoing economic development efforts, to be very focused. No one institution can do the job of all of us collaborating together. Just can't be done. So combining the funds of all, town, county, TDA allocation, and private investment is the way we think is right to go. The funding that we're requesting is the $50,000, as we mentioned the last time we were together. Your letter indicated support of $28,700, but we desperately need for you to look at that $50,000. Again, this team approach goes even beyond the county and the town and the chamber. It looks at the TDA. It looks at the community college. It looks at our business development center. And there are efforts afoot that will allow us to work with the PDC to perhaps look at taking that economic development activity that has been theirs and moving it in together and looking at combining our boards so that we get the best people at the table and all of our best collective efforts going forward. That's something that's discussing as we speak, I think, is the direction that would be very good for our county. We're looking at agricultural community, our manufacturing and industrial base, our business community in general, and individual supporters to come together behind this effort. We have a lot of work to do. We look to have our big partners like Blue Ridge, Skyline, High Country Council of Government, the Department of Commerce, ARC, on and on and on, bringing these entities together to support our efforts in the long term. And at the end of the day, this accountability issue, we know, we've talked about this, of getting those accountability metrics in place so that we know where we're going, what are we tracking to over the long period of time. We're working on those. We'll have those together pretty shortly, but I think it's really important that we get those. It is an accountable organization, but we're all accountable to each other. The county, the town, and this chamber accountable to the citizens of this county to make our prosperity go up. That's what we're all in this to do. There's no entity that's more important than the other in this partnership, and the ultimate people that we're serving are the citizens of Allegheny County, to provide better jobs, better high-paying jobs in the long term, to get more people to live here, to get property values up so that people are more prosperous than they otherwise would be. That's what this is all about, is having a prosperous, vital, viable, and sustainable long-term economic growth. We will come regularly, both at the town and the county, to talk about our progress, but those meetings will be things that you already know, because we envision a very tight working relationship so that we know what's going on at all times. What are your needs? What are our needs? What are the counties and towns-togethers needs? What are our citizens' needs? And the more we can put this together to get the better feedback in the long term, the better we will be. So we think this is a good recipe for success. There's not been, as you all know, a sustained economic development effort in this county in a good number of years. We think this is the right direction. This plan came about, as you all will remember from a lot of people talking about it for a long period of time, and you all were brought into all of that, knew what was going on, and again, your support was very instrumental early on, and we need it now in order to continue to move forward. So we're very thankful for what you've done, and we're very supportive of us working with you, and we look forward to a very successful outcome down the road as our county becomes more prosperous and more economically sustainable for all in the future. So I'd be glad to take any questions that you might have this time.
Thanks. Anybody have any questions?
Yes, I'd like to know the renewal rate for the current members of the Chamber of Commerce.
Chamber of Commerce today, we have about 300-plus members. There are approximately, I'd have to look at the numbers, but approximately 20% of that, maybe a little less, are in the middle of renewing their dues to the chamber, and a lot of that has come because of COVID and people who were in position where they could not pay on a timely basis, and we've been working with them.
Have you requested funds from the Allegheny County Economic Development Committee? We know that there's $74,999 of funds available there.
We have not requested any of those funds. Those funds, as I understand it, are funds that can be lent. They have to, cannot be granted. They are loan, revolving loan funds, and we have not requested any loan from anybody.
Okay. Do you, do you think that that is available if you have a business that is wanting to move to Allegheny County? Is that a resource?
I believe that it would be. Yes, sir.
Thank you. So questions I have, Mr. Chairman?
In fact, John, could I add to that? I think that is a resource that we desperately need to use. It's there. We need to use it effectively to recruit or to help a business that would be needed, and so definitely those, those funds would need to be used as a resource. Absolutely.
I'll go.
Okay.
Then, if I'm not mistaken, the town is, their part of your budget is 29,000?
That is what the request was. Yes, sir.
And the TDA, part of their budget to you is between, around 28,000?
That number obviously fluctuates over time based upon the revenues that come from those taxes that are collected on rooms that are rented, but historically that number has been around 25,000.
Okay.
To 2021, it was much different than that in 20, 2021 because of the impact of COVID.
Then your membership from the chamber is how much?
We have historically had between $30,000 and $35,000 in dues collected from membership.
And then you're, you're looking to, I believe, raise privately?
We have. We've set in our budget a goal for $80,000 to be raised from private businesses and individuals.
And that gives you an operating budget of roughly?
Around $250,000 to be able to pay the staff, which is our president, marketing director, assistant in the office, and a person in the visitor center. And then that would also allow us to have economic development efforts, travel, et cetera, along with marketing and advertising for the county.
And that was 250,000?
Approximately 250,000. Yes, sir.
Then I believe somebody told me that the town also gives you some income.
They do. We do have a dollar per year rent on the facility where we locate, and that's been in place for a long time.
Okay. That's all.
Anybody else? Mark?
No, no.
Chip? Thank you, Ricky. We appreciate that.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay. We will open floor. The commission's here to discuss this, and they're asking for their budget back of $50,000.
Chairman, I would probably be glad to sort of start, and I'm kind of going back to a previous email from Friday. Here, the manager emailed us with a, a list of basically from the public hearing, all those that were there, and maybe an additional one. Then there was some discoveries of some revenue. Is, that, I guess what I'm asking, is that email still accurate? Has there been any discovery since then? I know you're working also on the math for the revenue for the tax revow.
I'll be glad to respond to that if that's okay. Okay. The first part of that is, is I'll focus on the discoveries of the revenues. There are three lines within your proposed budget that we need to add revenue numbers to. The first one is 10-317-001, and it is, it is the header is called interest. Number that needs to go in that line item is $47,500. The second line that needs attention is 10-317-0000. The heading on it is called tax penalties. That line needs to reflect $6,600. The third line that needs attention is 10-319-0000, and that is tag office revenues, and that number needs to reflect $36,000. Now, when you add those three additional revenues together, you come up with $90,100. Now, that, that is the additional revenues that we have identified that was not previously in your budget. I will go ahead and mention to kind of complete the question. As you recall, I identified two specific line items that were, at the time the budget was prepared, was unknown, and they, they were basically cell phone line items. One of the cell phone line items was in the sheriff's department, and if you recall, we had a discussion about that. The request was $20,800. That is the amount that I believe at our last work session, we agreed to place in that line item. So that would come off of that $90,100 number, and the other is the cell phone for the veteran services officer, which will be, actually, it will come out of the administration budget because we have combined those costs. That is $1,080. So a total of those two cell phone line items is $21,880. That comes off of that $90,100 additional revenue, which leaves $68,220. Now, if you go back and you look at the requests and the comments that we're taking from the public hearing, and I'll just, I'll just read what the request was, what the proposed budget is, and what the difference relates to. And they're in no particular order. I'm just reading them as I've written them, but the rescue squad, they had requested $105,000. In your proposed budget, there is $40,110. That is a difference of $64,890. The next item, as we just heard, was from the chamber. They requested $50,000. In your proposed budget, number is $28,735. The difference there is $21,265. The next is the library. The requested number was 187,529. What is proposed is 171,635, which is a difference of $15,894. The fourth item is the JCPC. The requested number was $88,716. The proposed number was $81,556, for a difference of $7,160. The next one is the hospital. The amount requested was $100,000. In the budget, it was provided at 85. That is a difference of $15,000. And the final two, the extension office, as we discussed in the work session, they had a computer line item that was requested at 2350. There was discussion about what would happen if they had to go out. We talked about an IT position, but the end result is, it is a lesser cost to put the 2350 in than to go out and purchase the computers that they need to carry on their functions. So I would, personally, I would add that to the 21,880 for the phones to come off that 90. And the last item that I am familiar with is, and I think I also indicated this, was the ag recognition banquet. And we went through a sequence of emails, and as we all know, that was not And we went through a sequence of emails, and as we all know, that, that was not a function that could be held earlier in the year. And after some different conversation, they have spent just over 600 for some awards. The remaining funds, there's a remaining just about 4,400 in the current. What I had, had discussed with the chairman of the, of the, of that particular board was the possibility of rolling that 4,400 over into this budget to allow for the recognitions to occur from the previous year and in hopes of getting the banquet back on schedule on the February timeframe to compensate. And if that's a possibility, that would be another 4,400 that would roll into that money. Have a question, or you?
Question.
Oh, just keep going.
Oh, I just saw your hand go up. I thought maybe, okay. So, those items added together, minus the cell phones, is 130,959.
130,000?
959.
959. And I don't see the Allegheny news here, but I hope they can get accurate numbers in this coming addition compared to what they have put out in the past. Just a comment.
I'll, I'll continue if that's okay.
I missed the numbers on the extension office. What was the, the difference, sir?
2350.
2350, correct.
Okay, thank you.
I think there was two more requests, the Forest Service and Allegheny Wellness Center.
Forest Service, we gave the Forest Service the exact amount they asked for.
Okay.
They, they were here showing their appreciation.
Okay.
And the Wellness Center, we gave them the exact amount they asked for.
Okay.
So tho, those are the ones that I have. Now, if, if it is agreeable, I would like to, to recommend pulling the 2350 for the computers and the 4,400 for the ag banquet. I would like to add that to the 21,880 that we took for the cell phones and deduct that total from the 90,100. And then that will tell you how much money you have between your revenues and your expenditures as it sits. That is...
Always got a question?
A good question on the ag board. If, if the meal doesn't cost 4,400 to put, put on that event, what happens to that balance? Does it carry over to next year? Does it revert back to the fund balance or to our general fund?
Any unspent money is returned to the general fund in that, in that event.
And the reason for this extra 4,400 is we're caught in the same budget year having two ag dinners, correct?
That's correct.
We've got one in July, and to get back on our regular schedule will be in February.
February.
So that's the reason we didn't have one in last year, 20 budget.
The 4,400 is in addition to what's proposed of...
5,000.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Was everybody good with rolling it back?
Well, the only question I have, we're giving no consideration to council on aging or the Allegheny County group home. Are we just going to the people that showed up?
What, what I'm trying to do first and foremost is try to get to a number in which we can begin these discussions. And, and these, these cell phone items, the computers and the ag banquet are things that I, I feel are, that should be included in this proposed expenditure budget. If we can get to that, then we can certainly start talking about the other, and I'll certainly answer the questions regarding the, the revenue neutral tax rate and all of that as we move forward. But ju, just for not, if, if we include the 2350 and the 4,400 in with the cell phones to come off of that 90,100, that leaves 61,470 that, that we can talk about.
Motion.
That's about, and we're, our, our compiled total, pulling out the items we added back to the top, it's 130,959.
That, that includes everything but what I just mentioned, yes, sir.
Those two items?
Cell phones, the ag banquet, and the computers.
Okay, three items.
The remaining items that I identified earlier total 130,959.
That gives us 68,220?
That gives you 61,470 if you include those computers and the banquet totals.
Give me that number again.
And as already been pointed out, that requests that I identified were only the requests that were identified at the public hearing. There are far other considerations within that budget that were not, but that is what I'm trying to get to, is a point to where we can have an identifiable number, and then the process begins.
Okay.
The, the requested money for the hospital was, was 100,000, and we went back to 85,000. I believe 15,000 was the difference, and that was to go to the rescue squad to supply part of what they had been, being resupplied by Allegheny Memorial Hospital before the new hospital took over.
Correct.
Now, you've had a conversation with the new hospital, and my understanding is they're going to fund, they'll resupply the rescue squad when the rescue squad asks for everything except drugs. Is that correct?
There, there are certain things that they will restock, and there are certain things they will not.
Right.
Now, to, to sit down and give you an itemized list of that, I, I do not have that. But there is an arrangement that has been made that will allow for a restocking of certain items.
And what about the security at the hospital? Was there a discussion on that?
Was.
To help the sheriff or to help our budget?
They, they, they are looking to, I don't remember the, the position title, and I, if you would allow me, I know that Mr. Brown knows that. I can't remember the title of it.
Yeah, they called it, they called it baby city for lack of a better term.
And I didn't want to say that.
But that's what they called it. I know no other term to use other than that. But, but yes, if I, if I may, that, that was discussed both in the town and the county, yes.
Chairman, we don't have any recorded sound as he sits out there. We've got to bring him to the podium.
Come up to the microphone, Rick, if you would.
Sorry for that.
Thank you. No problem. We all get that.
So, so there was a meeting of the town and county talking about the restocking, which has been agreed to. That restocking will be for the next year, at which time they will evaluate and see exactly what was and what was not requested, and look to the long-term solution. So that has been done. And then there was a secondary discussion about the mental health issues, where you have these involuntary commissions that come in from both the town and the county, and their responsibilities, and when that handoff could be made. And the hospital is proposing to take over that as quickly as possible when it is determined that the balance factor is diminished, so that the sheriff and the, and the police can get back to work. And they're going to be paying a group, they're going to have a pool of people they can call in when it's needed, 14 an hour. They're also looking at both sheriff and police officers as hopefully a part of that pool if it works with their supervisors, and additional folks. But both of those are in motion. And my reaction to the meeting, I did attend for both the county and the town, that they were very appreciative of those efforts to make that happen. That was my, that was my assessment of the meeting, that it was positive, in the right direction, and everybody looking to work together.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If I may continue. Every good, good, good person has good people that surround them. And in that moment, it provided one of our good people, April Ham. The 130,959 number that I told you less than five minutes ago, that included the extension computers and the ag recognition. So pull that off. Your new number is 124,209. So keep that number kind of over here and keep 61,470 on the other side, and that's, that's the identified differences. Now, if, if appropriate, I will, I think I've made enough. Drew, if you'll pass those down. What I'm about to hand out to you is this calculation that has to occur each year of the new revow topic. And April and Rita Miller and, and Sidney and Drew and everybody that has toes and fingers have sat down, and we've visited this topic, we've looked at it, we've talked about it, and we've came up with what this rate is suggested to be. What you have is in a revow year, you have to go through the process of determining based off of your new property valuations what the rate would be if, if you kept it at the same revenues from the previous years. Well, as everyone knows, our current tax rate is .597. When we went through, and you have to take each year, and you'll see those broken out from 15, 16, all the way to 2021, but you look at the levies, you determine those numbers, and you have to determine a growth ratio for each of those corresponding years. And that number that has a negative .3 in 1617, 79 in 1718, 10 in 1819, 1.2 in 1920, and 10.1 in 2021, that's your growth based off your levies for those corresponding years. So you can look back at 1617, we, we actually went down. And, you know, it's hard to recover when your property values actually go down, but you, you take those, those together, and you, you divide them by the number, and that gives you your average, which is in the bottom, our average growth rate over our last revow period was 5.7, 5.761%. You then take your number that you determined, and that's through a calculation formula also, as what your revenue neutral tax rate without the growth factor would have been. Basically, if you look in the second column from the right, you'll see a number that says .5424. Well, that is the number without your growth factor included. That would be a revenue neutral tax rate for your proposed 21, 22 year. You then take your growth rate, you multiply that by your, your rate of .5424, which was without growth, you get that number, and then you add it back to your revenue neutral tax rate without growth. That takes you to the far right, and you see the R N T R with growth column. Revenue neutral tax rate for the upcoming year would be .5737. Now, this budget is built off of a tax rate of .597. So there is a difference there of 2.4. Now, I can, I can reference several other localities in the state that went through the revow this year. Rita supplied us with that information. They're anywhere from 2 to 5, 5 cents higher on their tax rate than their revenue neutral rate. You can look at the towns right now. Their revenue neutral rate is 35 cents. Their proposed tax rate is 39 cents. So when, when I identify this, what I am saying to you, you know, two weeks into the job last year, I walk in and I'm greeted with a nice letter, very nice, signed very nicely. We have, we have a task. We have a challenge, and basically we have an ultimatum, if you really want to get to it, of continuing to build our fund balance to an acceptable level. We made big strides on the 20 audit. We added 800-plus thousand dollars to the fund balance. Went from 11 point some percent to 17.2%. It's pretty good. For the 21, I expect it to be that or more. I think I've said in, in these meetings that we need to get to a 30% number, and in the right way, I think we can do that in three years. So what I'm telling you is, is I have built this budget with the same .597 tax rate, and that's what I'm recommending throughout this process of leaving the rate at. So if there are any questions about the revenue neutral tax rate versus the proposed same tax rate as the previous years, I'd be glad to answer those.
Anybody got any questions?
Just for clarification, to generate the same revenue that we did prior to our revow, our rate would be 5, 57, .573.
Yes. That's with your growth factor contributing.
The tax rate stays the same. The tax rate?
Tax rate in this budget did not change.
Which changes the revenue a little less than a million dollars.
I have been told that a penny is about 160,000. If you're looking at 2.4, you're looking at less than half a million.
Anybody have any further questions? Comments about the revenue neutral?
Do you think a time will come next year that the state will revisit us with a letter with a, maybe a pat on the back, or release us from our penalties that we might be under?
I will answer that by saying the state continues to check on us pretty often, as of, late as of today.
Okay.
So...
They're still watching closely.
I don't foresee any pats on the back in the next year or two, but I do expect to, to have the, the cloud slowly dissipate.
Aug is lifting.
All right. So with that, I hope that I've answered those questions, but we're back to, again, we're back to this, this discussion now about how, who, and where to distribute these funds.
All right. Going to take an order of government down here. Let's move with the hospital, make a decision on them. 15,000, I believe that was the number to put the hospital back to their 100,000 mark. Comments?
Well, I would comment there, say that, you know, that was characterized, that that was their request was 100,000, but, but also that was our commitment, you know? I know the conversation based on the change with the rescue squad, but that, to me, that's a different conversation, and I hope there's avenues that are working that out, so that's restored, maybe not fully, but enough to go a long way to having that a separate conversation. So, I mean, I, I really, you know, the rest of these, well, most of the rest of these, I mean, that one has been an ongoing commitment, and I, I really think we should honor it because it could be a windfall of going in the wrong direction if we don't, and I... it could be a windfall of going in the wrong direction if we don't, and I firmly support. Challenge is, we've got a 124 ask in, in 61, but a shortfall of 62 to figure out how to close the gap. Can you find any money anywhere else?
Looked the room over before I came in.
I eventually like to go through the whole list, but now that Mark brought up the hospital...
Let's take one step at a time. We'll do the hospital and then move on to another organization.
Yeah. I just want to talk about the hospital while Mark was, was there. But I think with that understanding that the hospital is going to restock a big part of what they weren't restocking before, and then the security agreement, in the long run, that's going to save the county money, in my opinion. I'm going to use Ricky's words that he used a minute ago, that I think we'll reevaluate this next year to see how everything goes with the hospital this year. You know, if those numbers work out right, we still have a ways to go on our, on what we had talked about a few years ago, but I think we can use the same logic that Ricky used, that we will reevaluate it on the next budget. I would be in support of putting that 15,000 back into the hospital. That's all.
We'll share some of the same sentiment, but a little bit of different direction. I wouldn't hear when these commitments were made, that was before my time, but I'm a firm believer in living up to a commitment. There's no formal paperwork, or there's no signed bank notes or nothing of the sort, but when you give your word to do that, I think we need to do that and continue that support every year on that 100,000 dollars till we get paid up. And I appreciate what the hospital's doing to help with some of the situations we are with the sitter service and, and helping out the rescue squads to restock. That's a good cooperative movement on everybody's part, and I appreciate that, and I, I support this 15,000. The hospital, if we don't have a hospital, we ain't got a lot of need for a lot of other stuff, really. You won't see the growth that we have had if we didn't have a hospital here, I don't think. So that's all I have.
Well, as a frequency, a frequent visitor to the emergency room, I'm not going to cut, I'm not going to recommend that we cut anything from the hospital. It's an integral part of the community. I would support the 15,000.
Like you said, a commitment's a commitment. I wasn't here when the commitment was made, but, you know, giving your word is your word.
Okay. All support, we, we're going to vote today, we're going to wait and do that.
Fun weekend. We can't vote on...
That's right.
We're, we're just going to compile those, and you'll consider...
How much, how much that leave us in the bucket, Mr. County Manager?
47,739 dollars with the full 15,000.
Well, the hospital got full consent from all each board member to support that. Okay?
47K.
Okay. Next one up, JCPC. Their difference was 7160. I'm answering from anyone?
This is a very important service that they offer. Getting juvenile offenders early can help prevent having adult offenders that are going to cost your community more later. So I think that's a small price to pay. I would, I would think we should fully support them for that amount of money.
Mr. Chairman, I wonder if a gentle, gentle lady would support a allocation of 5,000 instead of the 71?
5,000 on that. Anybody else have any comments?
I would, I would support their, their request as well. What's that, 7160?
I've got a question. How many, how many people are they talking about that this program, is it 10 people, 20 people, 5 people?
It's, it's proposed for 20.
20?
Yeah.
20 people?
Chairman, may I, may I say one thing?
Sure.
You all know this, I don't have to tell you. Identified 47,739 dollars is what you, unless we go into a host of other items. I'm just, I'm just trying to remind you of that as a, as a simple reminder. There may be items from here on out that we have the same thinking on, and if we do, then we're, we're going to have to go back into this process because, I guess what I'm saying is, is we can certainly keep a scorecard, is what I'll call it, but if we're going to work within those lines, there may have to be some compromise at the end of the day, is, is how I'll state it. So...
Certainly try to stay within our guidelines to set forth. What's the balance we got left?
We've already identified out of that 7160, 7,160, correct?
I have not adjusted it by that number at this point. We were, they were, there was still communication about that funding.
At some point, we've got to discuss the cut in the Council on Aging, which had 1,000, delivered 1,000 meals extra a month to the seniors in this county.
Okay, we've got a, one request to replace the 7160, and then one for 5,000. I only believe in supporting our, our juveniles the best we can. That's a good preventive measure, you know? You, you try to take care of problems early on and, and solve problems later in life. Seeing the money crunch, or in, I could, I think 5,000 would be a pretty good increase from where we was, and it ain't hardly where we need to be at 7160.
I, I agree with that. I support that, yes.
What was the total budget for JCPC?
They requested?
What we had, what we had proposed.
81...
81,556.
Council on Aging and the Allegheny Group Home, sir, just as a comparison.
The...
45,000 for the Allegheny County Group Homes, I believe. We're going to put twice the money in the PCJC than we are for the Allegheny County Group Home, which handles our mentally challenged.
The Allegheny Group Home requested 45,000, and we have provided 40,500 in your proposed And it'll take me just a second.
Do we, do you have data on what their total budget would be, the group homes? That be in...
Council on Agents 145,303 was what they requested. We are recommending 135, 176, a difference of approximately 10,000 dollars.
Okay, going back to JCPC, we've got three consents for 5,000. I don't know what the right-hand side of the table wishes on that. On JCPC, we got three, it says 5,000.
Wish we had more money, but...
I do too.
It is what it is.
So that's four. Go ahead, Bobby.
We're at, they're at 81,556 already. You know, I just don't know if we're opening up a can of worms. We're talking some of these...
We probably do that every day.
We should just stay at home if we didn't want to.
But I can't fish that, but to get rid of them. I mean, these aren't easy decisions to make.
No, they're not, they're not. We got, we got more tougher ones right up the road here.
You know, we're, we're trying to keep the budget.
Right.
We spent...
We're trying to abide by what the state requires us, you know? That's, that's always sitting in the back of your head.
I don't know how many hundreds of hours the Finance Committee spent on going through these, and we came up with a recommendation, and it's, I know we found some more money, and that makes, that makes some, some difference. We may not find that much money every year, that additional money, and a lot of us budget is on projections of what we're going to take in. We don't know what the next phase of this varnish may take. I just, I'll go along with the 5,000. I'm not happy with it, but, but I'll go along with it.
Well, it would be great to fund everything 100%, but it's, it is what it is.
And, and I don't know if we just need to talk about all of these things and send it back to the Finance Committee, or send it back to Michael or April and let them go through the numbers and, and give us something at the end of the day. We've got to try to do what we can for the people of the county.
Right.
And that, that's children, and that's older people, and...
And the reason that I bring this out is every time we lower that number, when we get to zero, and there's still requests that need to be considered...
I'm looking at 27,000 right now. Started out with a bucket, we take out, take out the 15 for the hospital?
Took 15 out for the hospital, yes, sir.
Five for JCPC, how much is in the bucket?
I have, I have not took, right now, before the JCPC 5,000 is 47,739. Now, if the consensus is to provide 5,000 to the JCPC, then I'll take that amount off.
I think that's consensus was across the board a minute ago. It was 5,000 for JC, JCPC.
Leaves you with 42,739. And the only reason I'm saying all this is we're, we're just going in some order, and I don't know how they rank preference, priority, what have you, but I'm just, I have to caution you that when you get to zero, you get to zero, and then you have to look at other alternatives. That's all I'm saying to you.
The other alternative is a tax increase, is it not?
Or reductions to other lines that we've already went through and discussed at our previous work sessions. I don't even, I don't, I'm not going to sit here and tell you a tax increase at any point. If you get to zero, we're going to have to dive back in this budget and refit yourself.
What's the next item?
Library. Library.
Difference in the request?
A 15, 894?
15, 894 is the difference in the request and the provided for the library.
Her request, as I remember originally, is funny, is basically spent on buying books for the, for the library. I understand they used her contingency fund last year to supplement that, or to fulfill that obligation with the library. I guess my question would be, is there, is there any way we can get in and help them in around 8,000 to 9,000, not, not the 15, 894?
The 9,000 is what they're asking to be replaced.
Right. For the books.
You know, we, we hadn't even gotten to the rescue squad yet, and that's a lifesaving function. Like Michael said, when we hit zero, we're at zero. Well, just look at it this way, Bobby. We don't have a woman and one baby standing in front of us. Tell you, I'm sure not supporting a tax increase.
No, no, it's out of the question.
I think the public spoke clearly about that in the last election.
I don't know, I'm, I'm going to speak about the library, and I'll probably have to find a different home to live in tonight, but that may be, that may be the way it happens.
A couch?
It, it's hard for me to understand how the library is funded with these 13 or 12 other libraries that we belong to. It's a regional thing. Library people are not employees of Allegheny County. They're employees of this regional group. And help me please, because I, I just don't understand. We've had numerous emails, and it's still hard to understand. We, the library sends their money to this regional collection point. Help me if I'm wrong, I probably am, but that collection point decides how that money's spent between the 13 libraries to a certain extent, and then I think you have some specific line items that come back to Allegheny Library. Is, is that the general gist of it?
Can you go to the microphone, please?
Sir, I think you just about got it, and it's, it is complicated, and I'm not trying to make it more complicated than it is, but all the money that goes from Allegheny County, whether it's the county funds, taxpayers' funds, or from Sparta, is, the bookkeeping's done in Elkin at the headquarters. There's a finance officer that manages that, but all that money, every penny of it, comes right back to Allegheny County. All the money from Yacken County goes right back to Yacken, the same for Stokes and Surrey. So anything that you all allocate comes right back here, every penny of it.
Then if we don't allocate what you ask for, either, either the Regional Board, or maybe it's a State Board, says, wait a minute, we're going to cut you back some mysterious formula that nobody understands this formula?
Well, it's, it's, again, it's just complicated. I, I, you know, trying to, trying to not leave things out, but trying to keep it as clear as possible, because it is, it can get complicated. But there is something called a maintenance of effort that the county, all, all four counties in the regional system sign every year to say, this is what, how we're going to fund our libraries in our own county. Okay? Now, that total of those four counties and the 13 municipalities equal the total amount that the state bases their appropriation back to the that the state bases their appropriation back to these four counties. So that's in addition to what is funded by Allegheny County and Stokes County and Surrey County and Yacken County. So there's an additional funds if all the counties and the towns keep the funding at least at the same level. If it drops back, then there is a reduction from the state as well. So again, they're just trying to say it's like a carrot, you know. If all of our local folks, counties and towns can keep the funding flat, then the state can too. If that makes sense. Does it? Okay. I hope it does. Please let me know if it doesn't. I'm trying to. So that money is in addition to what you all appropriate and any other appropriations that are made in Allegheny County. And all that goes back to help the libraries. So it supplements the money that you're putting into it. So it's on top. It's kind of icing. And that's the regional library systems. There are 12 regional library systems in the state. And without going into too much detail, they've been around for over 60 years. And they were set up primarily for rural counties to really streamline and save money for everybody. Bottom line is to save money so that there's not a duplication of services and counties can join their services. So it's really meant as a money saver. I hope that answers your question.
It does to a point.
Okay.
Then there again, I'm not sure about the salaries. There was two counties that have gone through phase one, maybe phase two. Some counties have not gone through phase two.
That's right.
I'm not sure where we are, but that money comes from the regional or whatever your, whatever your pool of money.
And again, it is confusing. The money, the salaries that Debbie and all the staff at the library here comes from Allegheny County and Town of Sparta. It's your, the funds, local funds from local taxpayers. It's just administered through the office in Elkin. The state money is on top of that and that translates into services for all four counties. The Northwestern Regional Library is considered local government, you know. As you know, Debbie and Doug and Carolyn and Tim are not considered county employees. They're considered local government Northwestern Regional Library employees since the money flows through there. And so the staff, since they're not county employees, would not be part of the salary increase if you all decide to give the employees, the county employees, a 2% increase. The money is handled by the governing board, which is the Northwestern Regional Library Board. And Allegheny's got three members sitting on that board to make these decisions, including Pat Polly, who has been the chair and provided wonderful leadership for the last 12 years. And the region tried to set up a salary study four years ago because there had been no raises for staff for eight years. And library, you know, folks are just like a lot of other government employees, you know. The salaries are low, but when you fall that far behind, we were having really a hard time keeping people in the positions. So three, three years ago, that study was done. The regional board that is our governing board just approved it. So the first year, all four counties approved it, including Allegheny, because it was decided to do the salary study in three phases over three years. So it'd be a little bit easier, kind of phase it in, to get people just back to, you know, competitive salaries for similar jobs in similar counties. You know, our salaries were that far behind. So again, phasing it over three years. Allegheny County approved it the first year, which was wonderful. So all the Allegheny County library staff had a third of that increase. You know, we requested the second last year and of course, the pandemic came along. Now, and you know, other, other things. Each county, of course, has their own things they're dealing with and, you know, that's certainly understandable. Last year, Stokes County was able to fund the second year for their employees. Okay? And again, it was Stokes County funds going to Stokes County people. And then Yacken County, when they saw in January, they had the funds to fund the second part of the year. So Yacken County employees with Yacken County funds were paid for six months last year on that second stage. And it looks like this year they're going to fund the third year. So it looks like Stokes and Yacken are going to fund really the third year. The Allegheny employees are still on the first because you all were able to approve it the first year and then last year happened, so couldn't do it last year. And what we requested in this budget was that second year to try to catch, try to catch them up. And that is part of the increase of that $15,000 or so. It's all, any increase is just for salaries for the staff here for that second year for the salary study. And then the other is to restore the $9,000 that was taken out last year so that the budget actually, of course, fell below what it was the year before. So where, you know, the Allegheny library staff is, and that's why they had to get money out of their savings, basically, to pay for books because there was zero amount for any books. And for some staff, you know, couldn't open as much and, you know, it, I think everybody understood it and understood what, you know, county's been going through. Know it's really hard. But I hope that helps some. But that $9,000 would restore the maintenance of effort, which means that there would not be further cuts from the state. If the region doesn't make that cut, the state cuts all of us. Just based on if we go up, we all go up. If we go down, we all go down.
But I think the short answer is we don't know what that formula is.
Yeah.
If it's a $10 cut, they cut $1, we just don't know.
It would be, I did talk to a person at State Library about that. And, you know, again, just like everything, it's evolved over the years between urban, urban counties and rural counties of who gets what, you know. But it would be to the region, it would be about a $7,000 cut to the region office if the budget, if that $9,000's not restored. And those funds are, you know, it's not a lot of people. We have four people who work really for the four counties and do a lot of things, including, you know, the book ordering and the processing and a lot of things that the staff here just does not have time to do. So it was set up as a money saver, just to say, okay, we do this here and we get it out. We have a courier that comes four days a week and, you know, brings things.
I know that you're fully aware of this, that the county is still paying the library. I think we have our debt service for, I don't know, another 10, I don't even know how many more years, but that's quite extensive and that's 30-some thousand a year, is it?
It's 25, a little over $2,500 a month. And I'm not sure how many years is left on that loan.
But, you know, I don't know if the state gives us any credit for that part, but that was an expensive program.
Yes.
That we're still, you know, if we weren't paying that part off, we would have a lot of book money left.
Exactly. And the county has been very generous to support the library. And I think the library has definitely grown over the years with all that has been put into it. To me, it is an investment and I know it's very costly and it is appreciated. Now, the state will look at in-kind funds. I don't know if debt service would, would contribute. So that could have offset the maintenance of effort. But still, what you have then, if some funds aren't restored, is you have no book line for Allegheny County and you have the staff working at really very substandard wages for Allegheny County.
Fund any numbers?
We have six more years left to pay.
Six more years. And I just want to be sure that, you know, we support the library and a big part of that is this six-year commitment that we have to pay on that building. When that commitment's up, there might be a lot of book money there.
Well, there really could be and we hope so. And we know that the county also pays for the power in that building, which I don't even want to see, think about what that is. But also, you know, we're here, I'm here to try to stand up for the employees in the Allegheny County library. We know how hard they work and they deserve to be able to pay bills.
One quick question. Does other libraries, the counties pay the power bill, the heat bill at all?
You know, Mr. Osborne, it varies so much from each county to county. Even within the county it does. Some of the libraries, of course, in Allegheny, just, it's one library, which is wonderful. In Surrey, there are five. There are four in Yacken and three in Stokes. And some are, the libraries are owned by the county and some are owned by the towns. And there's even one in East Bend that's owned by the friends. So they've really taken on a lot there. It's a very, you know, nice, nice library and they're, you know, they own a library building. But for example, the Elkin Library is owned by the town. Dobson Library is owned by the county. Mount Ari's owned by the town.
I was just thinking about, I know, I don't know the exact numbers. I've heard them talk about it. It's expensive for the heating and electric.
I shouldn't have brought that up. It is, we do realize there's a lot of in-kind funds.
That's a part of the cost. Part of the cost for the county, you know, is paying that too. I just wondered how the other.
I just got an email from my mother. She said, I can't stay up there either. I'm out of the home.
Well, we know you have very strong, very supportive family. And I must say too, that all, I mean, the counties are all great and it's just such a pleasure to work with all of them. But I have just always felt for all these years that, and I'm not just saying this, Allegheny County has had just very strong support for the library and I think it shows. And I think what we're saying is within your means, you know, we want to keep that there and not have it roll back so that there's a shell there.
We appreciate it.
Thank you all very, very much. I hope that answers your question.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, guys, let's talk some numbers here and move along.
I'm on the, I'm on the board on the library. And, you know, like you guys have, I'm sure you've had 50-plus people contact you either by email, phone, whatever, supporting the library. And, you know, I applaud everyone's passion about the library. We're all passionate about the library. And the staff is stellar. I mean, they've been there through thick and thin all these years. And I know that when my daughter was young, she went to the library and had story time. And she's 26 years old now, so 25 years old now, so. But, you know, there's only so many slices of pie out there. And, you know, I'll just say this, that a lot of our nonprofits are going to have to step up to the plate and do some fundraising. We can't expect the taxpayer to foot all the bills on everything. And, you know, I for one have never been asked for a dime from the library. And I'll be glad, I'll be glad to give money to the library. Give it to the rescue squad, as I'm sure everybody else does. But, you know, we've, we've got to, maybe you could do some out-of-the-box creative thinking and have, have like a book drive and have a list of, you know, certain books that you want and people can step up and buy those books and really help out.
Please.
We do have our bookstore that's run by volunteers and has made thousands of money toward the library.
Hundreds of thousands.
Hundreds of thousands, I guess. So that's part of, you know, what they do. And actually, without them, we would not have had the library we have today, so.
Thank you.
Thanks.
And it had, has been running as well. And there was, there were hundreds of thousands of dollars going into the building. And they still give a lot of money for a lot of material.
Okay. What's the consensus of the board here? What's the feeling?
I think we need to hear from everyone before we start divvying up the kitty.
I'll just say one more thing. From as many library people as I've heard from, I've also heard from other people in the community too that have said, you know, we've got to have a rescue squad. So that's an important thing too, as are all these other things. Say there's just many needs and.
That there is.
Resources are few, so.
Y'all have any comments over?
Trying to find some.
Bobby's looking for a place to sleep. Better watch what you say.
Bed and breakfast.
Can I, can I, I'm just looking through here at all the rest of this stuff and I probably shouldn't even go here, but just a couple of thoughts is, we have funded for an ag, for the banquet, for the ag for, for next year in July, this, this July, which would be in next fiscal year. Could we keep it on that schedule going forward?
I would defer to those on that committee or.
Stay on the July schedule?
Yeah.
I personally don't think so. That's, I don't know what farmers we got out here this July is our busiest. The summertime is just taking up with physical time. My question to Michael a while ago is, I don't believe we're going to have the crowd we had last year because it's being done in July. So I don't think that $4,400 is going to be used. So it comes back to the general fund. That was why I was asking if there was a rollover or anything.
So I'm probably going to get shot by a farmer, but, I mean, we are, we do have in the budget for one. And if there's not going to be an anticipated, a good turnout in July, could we push that one back to the, when we, we're going to do it anyway?
5,000. We're doing, you'd be dealing with unknown number. I mean, at the present time, to say who's going to know what that number is that actually takes place.
No, I'm saying just, instead of having to, just take the one we've already budgeted and push it to February or whenever we did it.
I think there was, on the ag board, and I serve on that board, there was a very strong consensus that they wanted to recognize these farmers that were awarded this, these awards for last year, to be sure they were awarded this year. There was some discussion about what you're suggesting.
Well, I'm just thinking, I mean, that's, that's two in the same year and we've, we're, you know, we're trying to spread money out, you know, a little bit of money out along ways. I mean, that's, I think it's, I certainly, you know, and in favor of doing it, I just, and looking at all these challenges, does it, does it make sense to double, almost double fund it, you know, in the same fiscal year? I know it's, I know COVID has created a bunch of this, some of this stuff or that situation.
It's money we had there though.
I'll respond if that's okay. There was, there was an original thought of having this banquet that I am describing as being passed into the next budget to actually occur in June of this year. Now, we sent out an email identifying our cutoff dates. And everyone is aware of that. We're doing that to get our invoices in in a more prompt fashion, to not have to go into September and reconcile things back.
Yeah, I understand. Trying to close the year.
So instead of having it in June, I thought was, let's just wait until the new fiscal year so that we don't have to go through that process. If we didn't roll that into the, having those bills, one, past our cutoff date, which does a cutoff date no good. And two, we would have incurred that expense anyway.
Well, the other question, and I'd said, I'm not, I'm just, I'm just kind of creating some conversation to maybe, hopefully something would, would come up to where we're not just looking straight at these dollars. But these, the other question is, we had a conversation, and I know there's a lot of work to be done before it gets there, if it ever gets there. But Steve Mason from the Wellness Center and the conversation of, of that. And we have budgeted a rec director, which we need. And then we have budgeted an additional position, which, as we have performed in the past, I'm, I'm on board with that. But if there's some type of, I mean, help worked out or agreement worked out, you know, could we delay this second position and these others, how many positions are we adding? And when are they coming into the budget? And could those potentially, what would be the effect of those positions maybe being bumped a month? And I know I'm saying that financially and also service-wise. And I know I'm saying that financially and also service-wise.
And, and you're correct. We, now, and I don't have my sheet in front, but it seems like there's four dispatchers, a, I think a patrol, a detention officer, a, and I'll call it a slash tax office, finance office.
An IT.
And an IT position. Now, I will tell you right out the front, that the IT position, that is a 12-month number. But in reality, we're, we're gonna be, from what I would consider fortunate, if we have someone onboard by first of September. Because we're not advertising these now because the budget hasn't been adopted.
And then you've got to create the descriptions and work the stuff behind the scenes.
So that position has some flexibility. And, and, you know, two months of, of the, of the salary. I mean, there, there is some flexibility as we go through here. But, you know, some of the dispatch, those are pretty much, we're gonna put them in as quick as we can get them. The detention officer, the civil, all that is pretty important to get established fairly quickly. The, the slash position, as I call it, you know, part of that position is gonna be dealing with the taxes that we're collecting from the town and we're getting into that arena. So there is some flexibility. Now, I will tell you, there's not enough flexibility to cover the gap between...
I know, I'm just looking for anything.
Yeah, I mean, there, there is some consideration.
I mean, if it makes sense. If it don't, I mean, I'm not, I'm not pressed either way or pushing for anything. I'm just trying to, to kinda do some discoveries here and see where, where we might could adjust and not hurt anybody and help all we can. But, so the dispatcher positions are for the...
AMD.
AMD. And saying they, they would be, all four would be hired at the same time?
Two, two.
I was thinking you said the kind of state.
Please correct me. We have two figured at one interval and two at another.
Well, we figured all four of them starting September. But we had the discussion that it would be a staggered implementation with the four of them. One may be onboard pretty quick, one may not be onboard till the end of August. It may be into fall because of training and, and being able to hire that many dispatchers also.
And feeling our way as we go. So, you know, the, the four was the, was what we were presented with to make it an efficient, effective operation.
The goal, where we, where we think we need to head to.
So there'll be, if I understood you right, there'll be three months of saving on salary for the IT because they'll not be hired till...
I would, I said two. I would say first of September is what I think I said that we would be fortunate enough to have someone onboard with. Two months of that salary. That, that could come into play.
Can you rough idea of that number?
To me, what Mark's going through is what every one of us has gone through. How can we find $10 here, $100 there, $100 there to make, make these things work? You just don't have all those $100 out there.
Delaying the IT position for two months will save you about $9,000.
We also have got to face reality. Inflation is raising its ugly head. Fuel has gone up. It's over a dollar a gallon more than it was this time last year. We look at the Sheriff's Department with their vehicles. That's a big drop in the daggone budget. Elkin is getting ready to break ground on a new store down there. It's gonna devastate us. It's a combination Walmart, Tractor Supply and everything else. Somebody told me the name. I don't know what it is. That's gonna pull from us. This being open now, not, people are not gonna be ordering on Amazon. They're gonna be going other places and paying that quarter cent that we begged for in other counties. We're not gonna get that benefit. Our tax revenue was up because everybody's using Amazon and we could get our taxes. So I think we've got rosy picture on our income. We may get smacked in the teeth, especially if the inflation continues going the way it is. So, you know, this is a small amount. The Budget Committee worked for, what, two months?
February till now.
And that was two days a week? Half day, two days a week?
Sometimes all day, sometimes half days.
Some, some weeks, three days a week.
I don't know if there's much to scrape up from the budget. I mean, any, any kind of big number or anything.
Now we, now we've gotta put it down to gotta have and wanna have.
That 9,000 is, to me, is a lot. I mean, when you're looking at what we've got, it ain't gonna cover.
That's a swamp ball here at the library if we're looking at that one.
It'll get us a little bit of something else. And it's the, the positions are the, the helper for recreation. Is that a 12-month position?
It was a carry forward from the current budget, yes.
I know it's not a new position, but, but it's funded.
It's a 12-month.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I have a question. How much money is in there for the swimming pool? Do you have money for the swimming pool and the Parks and Recreation? We've never discussed whether we're gonna shut it down or not. But that is one area that we're gonna have to come, we're gonna have to put ugly on the table and make that decision. Is, is that a small pot of money that we can depend, that we can look at?
I do, I do not. I know there's been several discussions about that pool in different capacities. But I was of the thought that we had determined due to several things, including the damage that occurred from the earthquake, that pool is not gonna open this year.
So there's no money in there in the pool?
Or is there any revenue?
Well, I'm starting to grasp at straws, so, thank you.
Okay, we wanna, we wanna finish off with the library and move on up. We got two more to go through, to my knowledge. Les Brew has some other, I got the Chamber and Rescue Squad left.
Council on Nation and the group homes. Next, next item?
Member Commerce. $1,265 is what they lack getting their 50,000. Their budget. Last year, this year, they asked for 50,000. I lost my number here somewhere. They got 28,000. But there's a difference of $21,265 to get them back to 50,000.
You see it? Sorry. Whenever I look at the needs of the rescue squad and we're dealing with lives, haven't even got to the rescue squad.
So are we still at 42,700?
42,739 according to my figures.
42,739.
That's not counting the library.
I have not. The only adjustments have been the hospital and the JCPC at this point.
We not add the nine into that available number from the two months delay on the IT? If that's really, I mean, if that's truly realistic.
That's a salary divided by 12 times two. That's what that equals, so.
Let's move up and discuss the rescue squad a little bit and see what kind of direction we're gonna go on the rescue squad and we'll come back.
Mr. Chairman, I recommended a rescue tax whenever we were discussing the fire tax. It went over like passing gas in the church. But I believe that that may be something we need to look at in the future. For this year, we are not gonna be able to meet their needs. I don't think we can come up, we're talking about pennies now and we're looking at a shortfall of what, $100,000? Basically? 65,000?
I don't believe we have the capability of creating a tax of that nature. I understand whenever we visited that conversation, there's no framework by the state where we can create that taxing authority just for that.
The reference book that we each received has a fire and rescue tax section in there, one of which they said that for rescue, they would make one district and that would encompass the county. But that is not gonna help us this year. That's something we can cuss and discuss next year, but that's off the table for this year.
Let me ask you this. I've been thinking a lot about the rescue squad and John got behind the fire tax and we all got that passed. And that's really been a lifesaver for the, for the fire departments. And I know we can't do a, a flat tax like we did for the, that's, that's not doable, I understand, for the, for the rescue squad on a property tax. But I think we might be able to say that we're gonna mark a, let's just say a half a cent in the pie coming out of the county and earmark that, build that in every year for the rescue squad. So they get a flat income, just like the fire departments are doing. Would that be a possibility after July?
That's, that's a discretionary tax, which means each year, although you may intend to do that, you can't commit prior or future boards to do that.
We've been committed.
And we may be even more before the day's out. But I'm just saying that if you place mark a specific portion of the taxes, that's only good for that year in which you incorporate it.
Well, how do we fund them on a yearly basis before they can survive like the fire departments are doing?
And as far as, you know, doing it from the general fund, the way we're talking about, you know, every board holds its own keys. But it also holds its own authority in the fire tax, the way we've established it, because we determine the rate. So, I mean, I don't think any future board would come in here and go in the wrong direction with whatever we said. I mean, they could, they, I mean, they could take this funding for the fire rates tax down.
But the one, the one difference that I see is the fire tax, although you establish a rate, ultimately you only pay out what you receive based on the collection. And we use a 98% with a 2% discount. If you commit a percentage of the ad valorem tax, basically guaranteeing that percentage, whatever that amount is, it's not based on collection, it is a percentage basis of that ad valorem tax.
You could just base it on a significant number and agree on the number.
Chairman, I think that's something we can discuss in the future. It's not helping us right now.
It's not, it's not. That's true. We need, we need to figure out a way to accommodate the rescue squad with their needs too, just like we have the fire departments. I think that's, that's something we really need to, we ain't gonna have time to finish up, do that this year before the new budget. But starting July, we can start having conversations about some way to, to build that in for next year and not have to go down the same road again. So they're at $64,890 difference and we funded down how much, 45?
On the rescue squad, you provided 40,011 and their request was 105 even.
We're looking at about 64,000.
64,890 is the difference in your provided versus their request.
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
I'd speak about the, the rescue squad that lately I've, I've found out, I mean, a lot of information's come to me, totally volunteers, no pay. I think there was a wreck out on 93 the other day and they had to have the rescue squads, heavy truck, come to cut those people out of that, one of those drivers out of that wreck.
Both of them.
My question is, if we don't have the rescue squad, who's gonna be cutting those people out of those wrecks? How are we gonna take care of some of these search and rescues? The year before last, they stayed on the river for weeks, I believe, looking for a lady that had drowned. Every time they go out on a call, nobody reimburses them for gasoline. They have to take that out of their budget. It's not like the ambulance service where they get paid for gas. It's my understanding that they can't bill anybody. And they go on a call and have to use some of the drugs, especially for the, some overdoses. I've been told those drugs cost up to $400 a dose. Now, that's one of the, one of the things that the hospital apparently can't restock or some of these restricted drugs. You know, I just, who's gonna rescue these people when they, when they need something? The fundraisers, you know, I think they bout break even sometimes. So I think it's up to us to, at some point, I don't know what we can help this year, but at some point, we're gonna have to do something to see that the rescue squad stays around.
Going, going back to fundraising, Jason told me this the other night. They had a chicken barbecue.
$435.
Worked about all day, but they made $400 that day on a chicken barbecue. I don't know how many people was out there, but you don't, I mean, it's a, it's a good thing. It's a good PR, but there ain't no profit much in those things. I think, I just think it's like the rest of you guys, it's time to step up and really try to help them out like we did fire departments in the very near future. But let's deal with this present time right here. We got $42,739, I think it is.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I would recommend, take half of that $42,739, slide it to the rescue squad. Then we can fight over what's left.
Let me clarify. If, if the consensus was to take 9,000 on the delay of the hire of the IT, that number is 51,739. So if that's the consensus, your number changes every time we talk about something.
What concerns me is that report that we got from the state inspection of our dispatch. I don't wanna discuss too much, but in my day, if I had a unit that had the discrepancies, they would not come into my system. And every critical defect that we had in that inspection was software. We are wide open. IT, especially with the recent shutdown of the gas line, is something that we have got to look at. I don't think we can delay. We are subject to being cut off to all access to every state computer system that goes through dispatch. We will stand alone because of the vulnerabilities that we've got in that one place.
I don't think we're delaying. I think that's as fast as they'll get it from day one.
Are we saying 20,000 for the rescue squad? Is that what?
That's what I would recommend, sir. But I, I really, I really can't see delaying, delaying an IT person. We've gotta get somebody in to get us straight.
What was their appropriation last year, the rescue squads?
25,000.
25,000.
25,000.
And so we went to 40, 15.
We initially took it from the hospital.
Kind of the hospital costs is what they were saying, the restock. Kind of the hospital cost is what they were saying, the restocking cost.
Keep in mind that I believe without looking, there's, is it fifteen thousand for the grant?
There's a fifteen thousand dollar match to a grant that they, I for each year, I believe.
And they only get that money if they get the grant from the state. It's a match.
That's correct.
What they pay out is what we will reimburse them for.
Speaking of grants, this is other information, but all fire departments got their grant plus this time, every one of them. So that was a good, that was a good lick for them.
Along some to us. They have, the rescue squad talked about their reserve and what they had, what they had went into it this year and what they, based on that rate, what they had computed through.
Three years?
Three years.
Yeah. So what, what I'm, what I'm thinking is, is I agree. I mean, we, I think we really need to, I mean, whatever we've got left, it's, it's really not, I don't think where it ought to be ultimately for what they bring to the county. And I think we all have kind of expressed that. I would say that, you know, if we, if we up theirs fifteen or so, twenty, but made that commitment that we're going to kind of start with them a little more at the top of the list in their next budget, I think that would go a long ways towards helping them. And there again, I mean, I know it's a new budget and a whole new process, but I think, I think we really need to sort of stick to that if we decide to go that direction. And, and I think it would, I think we can.
Do too.
As long as we don't forget. It's hard to forget meetings like this.
So, twenty thousand for the rescue squad? Everybody agree?
I would support that, Mr. Chairman.
That's consensus across the board. Now, we go back down to the Chamber of Commerce. We've got Chamber of Commerce and Library. How many dollars we got left?
I'm showing twenty-two thousand seven hundred and thirty-nine dollars.
That is correct, but I would point out, I don't disagree with the urgency in the IT position at all. What I identified was a projected starting date based on the adoption of the budget. I cannot advertise, nor will I advertise for a position that has not been adopted. That is where the two months come into play.
Understood. And I also understand that it is going to be very hard for you to find an IT person that is going to work for the salary that you're going to offer. So we may be a year without an IT person, but we've got to make the effort, in my opinion, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
I agree with the effort. I mean, I, in the, you can't do nothing until July one or the budget passes, so good possibility we can utilize nine thousand dollars. Is that where we're at?
I think that is a realistic approach. And if you do that, um...
It puts us at thirty something.
Put you at thirty-one thousand seven hundred and thirty-nine dollars. That's still in play.
That we still have?
Yes, sir.
What's left? The Chamber?
What's left of the Chamber and Library?
Are we not going to consider the Allegheny County group home and the council on aging also?
We are. What's the difference in dollars on the council on aging there?
Council on, council on aging is ten thousand one hundred and twenty-seven dollars.
Two homes.
John, I, I've served on that board. My wife worked for the council on aging for years, but I look at the money that we spent on that building, that far exceeded, I mean, I don't know if it doubled what we had projected. And that, and that has to be taken into consideration.
I would agree, I would agree with you, but with the increase in meals that they're serving. Now, I don't know if there's going to be COVID money that we can tap into, and I'm sure that there's COVID money that they have tapped into. So my recommendation, and I believe you'll agree with me, that we leave the current appropriation for the council on aging and look at the co-stim, or the Biden stimulus money that, that he's got out there to help them.
That may come in.
It may come in.
But we can't make that commitment. It's a maybe.
No, no, it is a maybe, but with the money that they have received and what we've done, I'm satisfied with that. But, you know, as a member of the board, if I don't bring it up, I'll get run off.
Well, I, you know, I can go with that route, but there again, I go back to the rescue squad. They did not receive one penny of COVID money.
That must be.
And almost all these other agencies.
Two thousand, uh, four thousand dollars.
Got COVID money. That, that's another hit for the rescue squad.
Now, if I...
Thirty-one thousand?
What I would recommend, Mr. Chairman?
John said there's a fourth, four thousand dollar difference in the group homes?
And if, if we're changing gears, then yes. The, the group home's request was forty-five and we have allotted forty thousand five hundred. It's forty...
If, if we could have that, give them, put an additional two thousand dollars in the budget for them.
For who?
For the group home. I believe that that would be a benefit to them. And then, whenever we look at the money that's left, I would recommend, gentlemen, that the twenty-seven thousand seven hundred and thirty-nine dollars be split evenly between the library and the Chamber of Commerce.
I can't see splitting out evenly. You want to split thirteen thousand to each one?
Well, what, what do we short?
We're only looking at nine thousand difference.
Nine thousand.
Nine, well, then we can give nine thousand to the library and the, and the balance to Count, uh, Chamber of Commerce.
Chamber was twenty-one thousand two hundred and sixty-five.
Mr. Chairman, I could go along with that.
Yeah. The library, that would put you? Yes, sir.
I, I really do appreciate that, Mr. Irwin's motion there, and we can live with that. Because what I think that reflects, and I want to make sure this reflects this, that we are all going to get in the boat together and rock. That we're going to say, this is the best way forward, and we're going to give it our effort for the next year, two, three, and really work together with Michael and Brian and Ryan, all coming together, your support, the council's support, my support, our board, Dale Caveney's support, and we're going to work together to make this happen. That's frankly, as much as important as the money. If we all work together, we appreciate your commitment to this. It, it, can I walk out of here knowing we're in the boat together? That's, 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 that's a big question. Here's why. I said we got to go raise eighty thousand dollars of private money. I can't go ask you or you or you or you or you or even me to give money to something that's on life support the minute we ask you. If you give it life by saying, I'm committed to making this work, to have Michael and Brian and Ryan and us working together, then I'll go ask, and I'm going to ask, the first person is going to be me, and I'm going to put my money where my mouth is. I'm going to do that. But I can't ask you if we're not asking the question and calling it that we're in it together. We can't start on life support. We got to start with, we're in it. A little bit less money, but we're in it. That's the commitment I really need.
Consensus of the board? I'm in favor of, of making this thing work and going forward with it.
Mr. Chairman, we have a member of the audience that started up. Ma'am, do you have?
All I've wanted to say is I certainly agree with you and I, and the working together is the important part.
Thank you, John.
I, I, I can live with this, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, John.
One thing that repeatedly I've asked for benchmarks.
You're going to have them, promised.
Let's put a date to that.
June thirtieth, we told you, you'll have them by June thirtieth before this budget starts, and we'll work with him to make sure they work. Company what you want. We're just together. If I came up with five that you didn't like, that doesn't do you any good. We're going to work together to get the right kind of benchmarks for the future, understanding our strengths and our weaknesses and where we can go if we can take this county. And I appreciate it.
Those three groups working together.
We will.
Pull that, pull that, put that together.
I'd go along with this pending the benchmarks be presented on Mr. Brown's schedule.
And I believe we've divided all the money, have we not, sir?
And, and I apologize, but there was a lot of here and there and if someone wouldn't mind, it helped me.
If I may, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
On the Allegheny County group, group homes, increase their allocation to forty-two thousand five hundred dollars.
We're adding two thousand.
Adding two thousand dollars, sir, to the library. We will add nine thousand dollars, sir. The remaining balance of the money will go to the Chamber of Commerce, if I am correct.
I thought we were splitting.
No, no, if we split them, then the library gets more than they requested and I will be on your nephew's.
Can I ask a question on that? So the group homes, you all sent everybody a copy of the proposed budget that submitted a request. Did you hear anything back from them?
I don't want...
I know we didn't at the public hearing.
I, I don't want to speak for anyone, but I believe Commissioner John Irwin has been the point of contact on that.
That is correct, Mr. County Manager.
I'd be, I'd be curious, do you have April, their budget, what their total budget is when they submitted that?
While she's looking, I, just going with the assumption of what I just heard. So that was two thousand dollars.
Eighteen thousand seven hundred and thirty-nine.
To the group homes. That was nine thousand dollars to the library with the remaining balance to the chamber.
Which I believe is eighteen seven thirty-nine.
I, I don't have that number, is why I want to clarify that.
I may have subtracted wrong.
I started out before we got into deep discussion at fifty-one seven thirty-nine. We took twenty thousand from that and applied it to the rescue squad.
Fifteen to the hospital.
I'm past that.
It's a goal, that's all he has.
So when I took the twenty off of fifty-one, that gave me thirty-one seven thirty-nine. Just talked about two thousand to the Allegheny group home. We just talked about nine thousand to the library. You, you subtract those numbers, that gives you twenty thousand seven thirty-nine.
Close to the chamber.
Close to what?
That's the remaining balance.
Okay.
And that was what, going to the chamber, right? I mean, based on the conversation, that's what was...
Repunishing, but we'll make sure. That is twenty thousand seven hundred and thirty-nine dollars as the remaining balance of that beginning fifty-one seven three-nine that we had already subtracted those other items from.
That is close to the difference. I believe we were about, the difference was...
Twenty-one two sixty-five.
That's pretty close.
So we're two hundred and sixty-five dollars.
And we didn't have two women show up with a baby.
I don't.
You spoil sport.
So the long and the short of it is I have a place to sleep.
Well, I was going to offer you the, the doghouse.
You're not home yet.
I think that concludes all of the, everything's on the agenda, right?
I, I believe the county manager just punctured that balloon.
So we're down to county manager comments. Do you have anything further to bring forth?
What I would ask is that after all of these notes that you allow us to, to review, make sure, check, double check and triple, then we'll put out something over the next few days that, that either confirms or challenges. And if we are to a zero number, then I would ask that we place on the first June agenda consideration and hopeful adoption of the twenty-one two budget as presented.
Ordnance and fees?
Yes.
Is that, I don't want to open up a whole nother discussion, but is that, are fees adjusting anywhere? Are they all?
No alteration, with the exception, you know, we had a discussion at a work, a previous work session about a solid waste fee for campers. I think, and someone please correct me, but I think that the final result of that was we would apply that ninety-eight dollar fee to those untagged campers. And if I am wrong, please, please correct me.
My understanding, sir.
Of course.
And, Mr. Chairman, I do request that the county manager provide the figures to the Allegheny Mistake slash News, please.
The, the fire tax stuff will be included, the rates to, to vote on those at the same... Didn't really have that discussion of setting that way.
At our, at our previous work session, we completed our review of the general fund and I asked a question about the other funds, which that is one of them. And to my recollection, the consensus was, there was no questions because they offset. Now, the fire tax, I think is eleven, Fund XI. The, the number of cents per district is the same in the proposed budget as it is in the current budget. So there would be no change in those values. What would change is the numbers of the revile that they apply to.
And the tax rate remains the same.
Tax rate is the same as it has been.
Have we received all contracts?
Yeah.
I don't have a copy of the Form 990 and the general ledger for Cherry Lane. I don't have anything for the rescue squad. Have they been received and not reproduced for distribution?
We don't have a contract for them.
We have Cherry Lane's information.
Okay. You've got the information. I would like a copy of it. And then if I have questions, I will ask them on the first meeting in June.
There is a, uh, there is a need to get all the commissioner's signatories on those contracts. Some of the fire departments would like a copy to, for their use, you know, so I guess June seventh meeting, fifth, whatever it is. Okay? Okay? No more comments?
I do not, but I would ask since, since April, Drew, as members of the, if they have anything they'd like to say, they've sat here with us as well.
Yeah, right. Go ahead.
I just add Mark's question about group home and ADAP's budget. What they submitted was a total expenditure budget of eight hundred and seventy-four thousand nine hundred dollars.
And the reason I asked that question was because, I mean, if you look at their total budget, obviously, we're not funding the, their whole operation.
Very small percentage of it.
Primarily social security.
So the, the monies that, prior to getting to that, that, all these other monies, it's, it's a huge impact in these other organization or much different ratio. I mean, the library's budget is obviously bigger than the fifty budget for the rescue. But that, that was all, so thank you.
I just want to say, I learned a lot during this process.
I just want to add one. That sitter position is only for nonviolent IBCs. The sheriff's department will still be...
The violent. For now. They may work something out in the future.
Yeah, I think on the violent side, I mean, there's a statute about that.
Yeah.
That they have to do that.
They have to do that, but it's when you describe them as nonviolent, and that'll be as quick as you can get them to be nonviolent.
Okay, move on down. Commissioner comments? Anybody?
I think I will probably just defer mine to the regular meeting, as all goes. But I would thank everybody that worked on the budget and the public. I mean, we're all in this together, but I know y'all put a lot into it. I hate to nitpick and try to find things, but I mean, we were right down here in the crunch time. And so thanks for your good sportsmanship and all your number crunching and effort.
I'm the same with what Mark just said. Thank everybody. I'd like to remind everybody, Memorial Day service will be Monday, 1 o'clock down at Veterans Park. Everyone is invited. Thank you. I'd like to thank the Budget Committee and everyone that placed their input. It's an agonizing process. Anybody, you know, we didn't see the vast majority of the work had been placed into this Budget Committee meeting twice a week, sometimes three times a week for months, agonizing over this. And what was the total that you started out with, Mr. County Manager? The number that was requested, 20 million?
It was just shy of 20. It was 19 and a lot of change.
It's been whittled down to around $17.8 million, and that is a lot of cuts. And you've got to look at it. So there was a lot involved. It's a lot tugging at your heartstrings whenever you get down trying to make a final decision. It's hard. Thank the Budget Committee and all the department heads. Thank you, County Manager, for your efforts and your worthy assistance. That's all, Mr. Chairman.
I would like to thank you all too. And I'd just like to say that we do need to look at something in the future to help the rescue squad out. They've talked about how they're gonna be dead in the water in about three years. So we haven't forgotten about you. We're gonna try to step up and do something.
Let's echo the same thing, the Budget Committee and everybody involved and all you people out here today. It's good to come out and we talk and share the concerns, and we all work together. We accomplish things. That's what's took place here today. We've got things accomplished, and that's the way it needs to be. Just keep moving forwards and we're back up. I just want to thank the board for a good meeting today and the progress that we have made. And we've tried to take all these concerns in effect and get them worked out. And I think we've done a pretty decent job at it.
That's all I have. Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion to second, all in favor.